Again, I do, I love it. I love the area over there. I'm the basic plant controller. I actions. I, again, I try to be active in the community that I'm in. Uh, in terms of my background, uh, I spent roughly thirty years in education. I taught mainly high school. Um, I was involved in many different initiatives. Uh, yeah, again, I did teach electronics, so I was involved with a lot of the technical aspects of what happened in the system. We finally got their internet put in there. Uh, you know, it's again, it was a it was a great place to be. A lot of cutting edge stuff that happened down there. Um, I eventually moved up into administration. I was an education consultant. I basically shepherd at seven market. Uh, I was in charge of budgets, money allocation, uh, hiring. Uh, it wouldn't fire. Too bad. Um, you know, the bottom line is that, uh, again, I've been a cloud instructor for about almost twenty years and the rest of my time is pretty much just in the administration. Again, I want to be on the board of education because I think that I have experience that, you know, would be useful, you know, to the, to the board. Uh, I'm not coming in with, uh, you know, I, I, I am not the white knight coming in with solutions and they have the flaming sword. I want to listen to what's going on. I want to learn about the community and what needs to happen. And I want to support, you know, again, teachers, students, administrators, um, and parents.
Okay, can we move on to Barbara?
Oh, bonjour, mes amis. I'm Barbara Scott Part, I'm B T C, I'm on the north. You have a can't keep me on point, see? You're kind of
So good.
No, that's all okay, done. So, uh, uh, I'll speak, speak into English. Sorry. The translation of that is hi, I'm Barbara Scott. Um, my, uh, you have a wonderful background. You should definitely be elected. Um, my background is, is a bit like John. Is it John or John? John, John, uh, except it's international. Does that matter? Meh. I have an agenda for the school board and it is to get French back into the school system. We have Grenier, uh, but let's go. And who?
I wish I knew it.
You see, that's, that's, that's the issue. We have, um, two things. One, I have an international background. I've been everywhere in the world and we all know and should know that we live in a global economy, guys, whether we like it or not. So where are the kids of today going to go? Got to have languages. You go to Europe, every single kid in Holland speaks at least two, if not three languages. You have to, to survive. In the olden days, we used to have us teaching French here in Maine. As you may remember, and it's going kaput, c'est parti quoi? For various reasons. So what my stick is to try to persuade, to bring this French education back into our system, especially at elementary level, because kids soak up languages like sponges and the easiest to teach. So that's the reason I came up here. I would love to work for that kind of thing, but anyway, this guy's very, she'll like him. I have a couple of degrees and all that bullshit, but that doesn't matter.
Jenny?
All right, I'm Jenny Martinez Nukito. Do not speak French. But, um, yes, also believe in the way it is. So, um, I have two kids in the schools as well now. One, I had one graduate this year, um, my husband and I, and, um, I think, you, you know, as, as we've been pretty involved with this school over the past several years with our kids in it, um, just looking for more ways that we can help out. You lead big advocates of uh, the teachers, the staff, the administration, the wonderful communities we have. I think everybody really appreciates the school, um, whether you have kids in it now, have had kids or just moved here because it's a great system. Um, and want to be kind of a voice for listening, for empathy. I have a background in public health nutrition and more recently, um, I am now a librarian, so I work with a lot of youth in my job. Um, I've been teaching a writing class with high schoolers, which bunch of Miranda Cook kids, um, for many years, um, and do youth services, um. So, yeah, I mean, just kind of like wanting to connect more with that community. I am involved, I volunteer a lot at the school and yeah, oh, bringing that up a level, I guess.
What's that?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Hi, I'm Leslie Marco. Um, I'm a graduate from Miranda Cook Community High School, uh, graduate class of nineteen ninety-seven. I grew up in Manchester. Um, and back to Mount Vernon and bought a childcare center that was already operating, continued to operate on the very edge of Belgrade and Mount Vernon. Um, I have a background in communications and adult education, um, and adult learning. Um, I'm this fall, we'll celebrate eighteen years with L O Bean, where I've been in leadership, involved with hiring, letting people fire themselves, um, and also sort of, um, working in a collaborative way to, to bring streamlined processes and transparency and collaboration to make the best of ideas move forward for the best of business and people. Um, and so I have three children, um, ages twelve, ten and ten. Um, and so they are in the school system now, all three in, um, various levels of special education, um, which makes my involvement, um, more interesting for me and more difficult to learn about. Um, so I've been sitting at the school board in person for about the last six or seven months of the school year. Um, and was able to watch the budget process and watch how the board works together or um, how the administration, teachers and others bring issues forward. Um, and I want to become a, a different part of that, um, by being a board member itself. Um, and I think that towns and citizens, parents and the like, all need to be very informed and need to be very engaged for us to all be aware of how decisions are made and that we are comfortable with those decisions that get made.
Great. Vanessa?
Hi, I'm Vanessa Buck. Um, I am a graduate of Miranda Cook, two thousand and five. Moving on almost twenty years, it's kind of crazy. Um, I have three boys that attend Mount Vernon. They are nine and the twins are six. Weird fact, we both have a son. Um, I, uh, currently work at the Travis Mills Foundation. Um, I am a logistics slash program coordinator. And, um, I've been there for two years now. Um, I just wanted something new. Uh, my background is I have a political science degree. I wanted to be a lawyer. Boring. Um, I went into, uh, paralegal, paralegal studies and I became a paralegal and worked for the district, uh, attorney's office in Augusta for a little bit. And then decided I wanted something new after I had the twins. Um, so I was a stay at home mom for a little bit, um, and then I went to the Travis Mills Foundation. Um, I guess I just want to be a representative for our community and our, they're our children. I want, um, the community to have a voice through me. Um, obviously I have a vested interest because I have three boys in the, in the community, in our school systems. Um, I've coached many of these children and I just want what's best for them and, um, I'm hoping I can bring, um, the aspect of teamwork back into the board, um, and be a member of the team.
Okay. Want to ask the first question?
Uh, sure. So during the recent pandemic, uh, there, there, and be, because of the pandemic, the need to transition to remote learning, uh, the, the overall test scores, uh, seem to have fallen. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if you have specific steps that you would advocate to enrich uh, the learning experience in order to bring those test scores back up?
Jenny, you want to start the rock?
We're starting in the middle. Um, it's a great question and I think obviously people all over the country are suffering with the same, the same question. The first place I would go is to say, I actually have a master's degree in education and I, education was a huge part of what I did career wise for a while, though not in a school. But honestly, that is a place I would start with asking the teachers and really having some conversations with teachers at each level, elementary, middle school, high school, because I don't think that any of us in the community, even as qualified as we are with parents with our own, he's like, I know it would work great with my own kids, but I have no idea. Like, I didn't know any of your kids, any of Buddy's kids. But the teachers are the experts and I think that a huge part of how I would see my role in school committee is literally supporting what the teachers are telling me they need as well as families, as well as the community. Um, but in this specific instance, the teachers are absolutely the experts here. They would be the people I would be going to. Which I guess means I don't really have a great answer for you because I haven't spoken to them, but, um, you know, I feel like talking to teachers at every level would be giving the information I needed to bring to the school board to have that conversation. Um, best.
Okay, great. Please, uh, Leslie?
Um, I don't disagree with, uh, Jenny saying as far as, um, this wasn't an ideal situation for many of our families. Um, some children, um, learned okay this way. Um, they made it out the other side, okay. Um, my three kids have not made it out the other side, okay. Um, tough to compare. I'm not sure what their outcome would be at this level if it had to happen. Um, so at some, I try to hear from where the teachers and the administration are at with what plans they've had so far to try and recover the kids. Um, I do believe that they're the experts, but I also believe some tough questions need to be asked as we've been out of pandemic and out of remote learning for a little while. Um, to sort of understand what they had for a plan of trajectory and what they believed would actually be a successful approach and whether it felt like that worked out, hasn't worked out and the scores are still low, what do they intend to do now? Um, and that's really just an infrastructure, that's a bigger infrastructure, um, question that I think is still bigger than just the teachers.
Can I answer this question that you were, you got?
I am there.
Can I? Totally did. I would put that question to the parents. Not the teachers and not the school board, the parents. First, and then I would suggest to them, though I'd be very careful about it, is to change the scheduling of the classes. So that you can make up for the lost time we've had with the pandemic, with extended hours every day at school. In other words, you extend the curriculum. That's what I would do. I mean, that's what private schools have done. But ask the parents.
Got it.
First. Do a survey. Ask them.
Vanessa?
I think it's a, a combination of, of the whole community. Um, I don't think it, it's just the parents or the teachers. I think they need to combine. Um, I believe that everybody should be heard there. I know that the parents, the parents see it more, um, the reactions to the having to go online again, um, the struggling to figure out things and the parent really not knowing. Um, and that's where a teacher comes in. That's where the teacher, um, is able to guide them. Um, I found with my children with remote learning that, um, it was kind of a game to them, like they wanted to be on their iPad all the time. So now it's, it's uh, almost an addiction. So they want to be on their iPad a lot. Um, rather than reading and writing and, you know, putting it on paper. Um, that's what I struggle with most, but I I think if you combine, if you're getting the parents and the teachers talking and you're coming up with something that's cohesive and it's going to work, um, I think that's probably your best bet.
John?
This is a good question. I, I, you know, like many of you, I've lived through this. My daughter and her two, my two grandkids and my wife were all fighting over a one meg internet connection. And, uh, it, it wasn't pretty. Uh, in terms of how you, how you make it better, um, the pandemic affected you know, everyone socially, economically, emotionally, you know, education wise. It is just a huge cloud and I've actually spent some time, you know, online looking at, at, at possible solutions and even at this point, you know, the experts are saying that, you know, we, we really don't know what to do at this point and, you know, we all feel like we need to do something. And, you know, obviously, you know, getting teachers involved, uh, because they know there's, you know, their students the best. But how do you, you know, parlay that into, you know, a, a plan for students in general? Uh, I, I don't know how you would do that, but I think, you know, individually, again, with, and the, the idea of parents is, is, is key because if they don't support what you're doing, that it's never going to work. So the, the bottom line is, is that you just need to have, again, I think individualistic solutions are best because one size fits all. Uh, clearly isn't, isn't going to do the job. I wish I had a better answer for you. I don't, I don't know actually the derision, but I, I can't say that I was never great in math in high school, but when I got into electronics and found out, you know, what math really could do for me, you know, that, that gaping hole I had back in high school filled in rather nicely out of stable that actually teaches. So I, I have, I'm, I am eternal optimist. I really believe that we will get through this and, and a lot of it again is going to be up to the individuals, you know, who, who's actually had to endure and suffer through this.
Good, thanks. You want to ask the next?
I can ask the next. Um, so the next question for everybody, um, is if you could tell us a little bit, maybe briefly about your thoughts around budgeting process and we're specifically wondering how you'll evaluate costs of programs or learning experiences and versus benefits gained. Um, yeah, where do we start? That.
You can start, Sarah.
Can I understand the question?
Um, so you're looking at a proposal for for curriculum or some such, how would you evaluate what it costs versus what educational benefits?
Yeah, no problem. I've handled budgets that are probably three or four times the size of this town, so that's not mature for me. I think you're asking about allocation. Is that what you're asking?
The cost benefit.
Cost benefit, yeah. And I don't know enough about the budget right now to really answer that until it's
Okay. Jenny?
But budgets are a lot mysterious.
Yeah. It's elegant, so no. Took a detour. What do I think about figuring out budget and cost benefit analysis for different programs? Okay. Um, so being new to the school committee, I can honestly say a big part of it would be figuring out what we've done in the past. So looking at, you know, um, if they're, whatever the, the item is, if it is a repeating, you know, it's a repeating program, for example, a returning program is did, did it do what we thought it was going to do? Um, if so, then obviously that's, that's a positive. Um, in terms of assessing new things, um, let, let me think, um, and I'm, I'm struggling because I don't have an example, I guess. So, um, really looking at probably what other districts have done, what some of the schools have done of something similar, how, what was, you know, response in terms of positive or negative feedback to similar programs either at Miranda Cook or the, the uh, elementary schools versus areas we'll most getting feedback from other administrators and stakeholders. Um, some of that is also our community members, our parents interested in said program. Um, obviously having buy-in for a very expensive program is going to be super important if it is, you know, an extremely costly item that people don't want. Um, I don't know that the outcome is going to be good and it's probably ultimately not going to be a positively received, um, program. But, um, I, I think that's probably the wish I had a specific example. It's probably the best I have come up with right this moment.
Uh, Leslie?
Um, so from my point of view, I think that if you can't break the budget down so that you can understand all the components of the budget, not hold up budgets, not only pieces of budgets. Um, as I sat through presentations in the last six, seven months, it wasn't ever very clear as to what was being brought forward and what it was intending to solve. Nothing was being, um, quantified as far as what a problem was and why something is being raised as a potential solution. Uh, I think that when we go back to the place that talks about the administration and the teachers and the community as far as bringing, being some of the experts that can bring forward the best ideas to try and solve what's going on in the schools, you expect that to come as a meat on the bone as folks that would be voting or community members that need to learn, um, because ultimately we still end up voting. Uh, whether board members are voting in the moment or whether the community is voting later, it's important that it's very thoroughly understood why we have or what we're proposing, what we're proposing, so that folks can be more informed than just a high level budget item.
Vanessa?
Um, I essentially would probably, uh, work with the board members to research what other districts are doing or surrounding us. Um, get the grants that are out there, um, that can help with the budget. Um, I know that there's a lot of federal grants for schools. Um, depending on, you know, the issue brought forward. Um, and yeah, that's essentially it.
Yeah. Well, John?
Uh, I've survived many encounters. Um, and it's been my experience, generally speaking, that um, money comes in, uh, administrator decides that this is the way we're going to go. Uh, and then when that administrator leaves, another administrator comes in and goes, no, that wasn't good at all. We're going to try this now. You know, it's like, uh, same, same idea, different color papers sort of thing. You know, it's, I think the best way is to go about the process if, if possible, because sometimes it's not, is to, you know, establish metrics that will, you know, clearly define whether or not what you're doing is, is successful. Uh, so many times that just doesn't happen. It's like, uh, we got a whole big pot of money. And, you know, okay, we spent it, but what do we really get for it? And that's, that's, that's been a problem that I've seen in thirty years in a technical high school system, I mean. And you have to build up in this, this, like, again, a trust and, and research, again, is a wonderful idea because you know, uh, I, I used to have to buy copiers for the graphic arts department and that's a fifty thousand dollar minimum for, for department, those fourteen departments. Uh, salesmen buy, I mean, they buy. This will do everything you need. Uh, and the truth of the matter is, is that a lot of times you don't really get the, the full flavor until the machine's been in the department for a couple of years with kids operating it. When you find out that maybe it wasn't so good as the salesman uh, represented to be. But again, I think the idea, they're going to start off with a clear idea of what it is you expect and then to follow, follow up on that. When against with questionnaire studies, I mean, feedback from, from all the people that are concerned.
Okay. I'll want to ask the next question.
Sure, um, can you, uh, three or doesn't need to be three, but, uh, concerns that you have for the school district today and how, what, and, and what's, what is your working style to get those issues? Um, I guess to a, a table, to, to, to a working table to get, you know, kind of how to resolve those issues?
Leslie?
Wow, right. I gotta do it still or I'm gonna still forget. I'm aware, but this is my process, just like you talked about. Kids all have a different process. This is my process. Okay. So, um, one of the things I'll say, which is almost a follow-up to what we just had for a question a little bit, is a reminder still of what the role of the board is. The role of the board isn't necessarily to, um, come up with all the ideas of how to improve the school as much as come up with ideas to ask the right questions and ask the right information. We have a director of curriculum. We have people that are in positions that that's what they do. So the board should be asking the right questions and asking for the right metrics and asking, um, uh, backup and support for the things that are suggested. So I think that sometimes that's a little bit what's lacking. Um, is that type of support for information and requests, um, and proposals. Um, not really enough there to go, okay, makes sense. I'm on board with that, right? Um, I think one has to do with the management of technology right now. I don't think the school was prepared to go into full-fledged technology support type of schooling system. And as they've come out of it, I think they've continued to use it. I think there were things that were a blessing and a curse about that time. I don't think technology has completely been cursed. But I think how the school is managing the technology has not been beneficial nor safe for the children to access. Um, there are not enough limitations and controls on what the kids have access to. Um, and it's not the best learning style for kids who need a book or need paper. They have supported that at times, just only talking about my own children and my requests. Um, it still varies by teacher, by subject. Um, so that's a second is technology. And I think the third is still there's a real lack of engagement of detailed information throughout our communities across all, all stakeholders from parents to non-parents, to previous parents, grandparents, teachers, children, staff, administrators and the like. Um, I think that's really, really important to be deeper into the understand what's going on because if you don't go deep enough, you don't find the right solutions and you continue to waste money by spreading around and band-aiding the real issues. Uh, we have trouble with resources and there's some good creative ideas around how to solve for these resources. Um, but when you don't get deep enough into the reasons why those are good ideas, it leaves folks with just a knee-jerk reaction as to whether they like those ideas or not. It's important that we ask more questions so we understand what's going on.
Okay, so I understood your question as, um, like, almost like goals that you want to bring to the board to achieve.
It was concerns, too.
Concerns. Um, so mine are more like, um, like, I feel like the elementary schools should have heat pumps. Um, I believe that they are, um, efficient, um, and there's also some grants out there for schools that can use them. Um, so I think the heat, um, in the schools are okay. However, the heat pumps will add to it, but I'm looking for the A C. Um, A C units in schools, um, I think will be beneficial. I know that they don't, they wouldn't run during the full summertime, but in the May, in May and like, um, yeah, basically May, that I feel like these kids, they need the air conditioning. Um, it's one of the issues that I've brought up before. Um, again, we would look for school slash federal slash local grants for the heat pumps. Um, I want to also improve our meals for our children. I know that they're free right now, um, through federal money. Uh, my, my children, uh, come home starving. Um, I ask them, you know, are you not getting enough food? No, they're not allowed to have seconds. Um, only one portion for my nine-year-old who's growing like a weed, just doesn't sound like it's, um, a good way to utilize, um, the free money, like, rather than me allowing them to have seconds or allowing them to have a little more food somewhere in there. So that's something I would like to improve. And also, um, just to make sure that our teachers are taken care of and heard along with our children. I feel like, um, these teachers have, they have master's degrees. They, um, they know what they're doing. Um, I feel like there's members of the board, myself, I don't have a master's degree. Um, and a lot of other board members I know don't have master's degrees, um, in education and, uh, so hearing the teachers', um, voices is probably what I would like for more of, more of the input.
John?
Uh, insofar as I've really been in part of this community for like the last three, three years. And specifically in terms of what's happening in the school system, I don't really, I clearly I don't know. But I can tell you that my concerns, generally speaking, you know, center around, you know, the special education program and the I P's, advocates for people that have uh, intellectual disabilities or challenges. Uh, I think that needs to be, um, you know, a firm foundation because the other part of that obviously is that it's it can certainly impact your budget as well. But again, I'm, you know, totally on the side of the student success. Um, communication, uh, is always, uh, a factor that's critically important. Again, across the spectrum, uh, everybody should be at least aware of what's going on, myself included. Uh, and I was certainly, you know, work, work toward that end. And, and again, with my background, the, the technology that's in the school, again, it's a, it's a double-edged sword, uh, but it's there to be part of what needs to happen for all of our students because you know, while maybe we, we may not be all that comfortable with some of the stuff that's going on, you know, smart boards, your whiz-bag things that got out there. Uh, these, these kids, uh, again, are native to the technology and it works for them. It does work. So I, I think I would support, you know, again, a, a focus toward that end if possible.
Me?
Yeah, right.
I agree with this lady mostly with what she's saying. I would add A I. I'm concerned about A I. Um, it's all across the country. It's in various institutions, probably in, in, even in the Mount Vernon website, who knows? But I'm very concerned about that. And I assume that the Board of Education would, would be, and if not, should be. And this lady could probably very happily take the lead on that. She seems very competent to me. I think I just voted myself out. You, you, you get what I'm saying. Uh, A I is money. It's like globally wrong, we started telling you. French, French language and A I, I mean, man, you can't be ahead, right?
Okay.
Okay, um, so, yeah, let's see. The first thing I think I would say is just making sure that we are doing everything we can to create a safe and healthy space for every student, um, mentally, emotionally, physically, you know, all of that. I think we probably don't believe that. I don't think that's at all exclusive. I think while everybody might have a slightly different definition of what that needs or entails, we all want it for our children. We all want it for our community. Um, a lot of that comes down to communication, which is kind of my second point. I think probably everyone in this room has called the school board once or twice or emailed and just, you know, not negative. Like, hopefully, there's been a lot of positive stuff that has been spoken or written about. Um, I know in my experience, um, and, I mean, I think we have had a great school board, and I wanna give a shout-out to Kathy, who we are sadly having trained, please, because that's why we're here, but she's been amazing. Um, you know, but I know, and I know it's a huge amount of work to be talking to stakeholders, um, constantly, probably sometimes. But really listening is hugely important. And I know when I've had conversations and I have felt listened to, even if ultimately the final decision that was made by the board as a whole wasn't exactly what I personally wanted. I understand that because I was listened to, other people were too. Um, in my work as both a dietitian and a librarian, a huge amount of what I do every day is literally listening to people who might or might not believe the same things I do or want the same things I do. But for me, listening to them and providing that person with guidance is really, really important. A judgment-free kind of, you know, zone, which I think is essential here for the school board. Um, those two are interconnected but similar. So, um, and actually, to bold on what you were saying is academic integrity. We do have A I. We do have the internet, which, I mean, in quick lines, is gonna tell me probably not too many people went to school with the internet. Like, we just did not have that as a thing. Um, and it is a game changer in the schools, and for good and for bad. Like, I think as a parent, there's plenty of things that have been amazing. Um, and plenty of things that are a little more, nah, right? I have a better word. Um, but, yeah, I mean, it, it's a challenge, and it's a challenge for uh, teachers, um, and helping manage, and they need the support from the school board, sometimes to make hard decisions, maybe. Um, so I think that there's like a huge, massive amount of work to be done, a lot of it comes down to listening. Um, listening and being empathetic. Yep.
Thank you. Very good.
Do you have time?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I'm just picking to try to pick one we haven't touched on as much from our list here. Um, can you maybe tell, I'm doing a trick in combining two into one. Um, tell us about, um, how you work with a group, collaborate with a group, and, um, how, um, when you're working with a group to make a decision, what sort of factors you're thinking about?
Um, I work for the team every day. Uh, we work at a, um, program team at the, uh, at my, uh, Patas Mills Foundation, so. Um, I don't know if it's a quite as elaborate as school board is and their decisions and but, um, I work collaboratively with three other women. Um, we butt heads sometimes, because we're all women. Um, but we essentially communicate. That's what I, I'm gonna go with is effective communication. There has got to be effective communication of every board member with teachers, with students, with parents. Um, I find that when you are effectively communicating with each other on the board and effectively with everybody else, that's when you're gonna get the most out of your team. And, um, essentially, that's it.
John?
I did a lot of collaboration, again, um, with the technical high school system as a consultant. We, uh, again, as I said, I had seven trade technologies that were spread across the state, and we were required to have meetings, uh, you know, to talk about, you know, bonded money, concerns in the shops and so forth and so on. And, uh, you know, I had been the trade instructor department head for, you know, close to twenty years. And I found the best way began to run a meeting is since I was the one that called it was basically this, you know, first of all, everybody, everybody talks, everybody has something to say. And, you know, for most of my departments, that wasn't a problem at all, but the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, again, the best way to lead is to listen. And then when you get a, a sense for what's, you know, what's going on and what the consensus is, then you try to, you know, to build on that and make sure that everybody feels like they have a stake in what you're doing. You know, sometimes a superintendent will come out with a program and, you know, everybody would go, oh, God, are we gonna do this, you know? I'd spend a lot of time thinking about it, and I'd have some ideas, and again, I'd talk to the folks that are out there. And, you know, then I'd say, well, you know, we could try this too. And sometimes what I did, you know, worked, and sometimes I'm like, I don't think you want that. But again, it's, 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 you take the ego out of it. You work with people because everybody brings something to the table. That's, that's the critical part about this. Everybody brings something and everybody's useful. So that's, that's where I'm at in this.
So, um, that was very cool. Um, I agree. Um, early in my career, I was a Peace Corps director in West Africa, and, and the Peace Corps Washington would send me off on these management seminars, you know, how to run stuff. Uh, which is very much along these lines that you had, John. But the best tip I ever got out of these very expensive seminars was if you wanna get a decision done consensually, make sure that in the room there are not enough chairs. Think about it. Chairs. Think about it. Because if you have to stand up, do you know what people back there are standing? They want this thing done fast. You think of getting, no, this is management crap. This isn't, they paid a lot for this thing. You don't have enough chairs. This essential stuff gets done fast. So I would follow up on John. I would just say, that's great. Make sure there are not enough chairs. That's my management tip for the, for the.
Sorry?
I'm gonna change my life. Yes, so professionally, I work collaboratively, collaboratively with, um, you know, with, with a team at, at my library, with all the libraries I've worked at. Um, and it's just really fundamental. I mean, you work better when you have other people you can depend on, when you can communicate with. Um, and also, I think listening is the number one thing. If you can't listen to what other people are saying because you're just waiting to be speaker yourself, you're really not gonna get anywhere. You're only looking to further your agenda. So listening is super important. I think one of, I'm thinking of an example as I'm listening and, um, I think I mentioned I, I run a writing group, run for years with, uh, middle school and high schoolers. And we, it is, it's, I mean, it's awesome. Um, so it's, it's a collaborative writing group for kids who are really serious writers, like writing their own novels outside of school, doing short stories, thinking about submitting for publication or contests or whatever. So we meet on a monthly basis, and everybody goes around and critiques everybody else's work. And we have created a system where it's very collaborative, because everybody has a few minutes to really speak without any interruptions, and then we kind of have this discussion. And that has just worked so well. I'm not saying it'll be the same in the school board meeting, but just the, not just the listening, but like teaching kids to listen, teaching kids to really pay attention to what's being said without, without needing to speak, without needing to respond. And I think that's a big piece of it. You don't need to necessarily rap. In fact, I love what you were doing, because I am a big note-caper, and I was thinking I would do the same thing. I like to write things hand and kind of get some thought. Um, so, yes, listening and chairs. I love it. Black chair.
Um, so the stakeholder philosophy is really, really critical. I think in, in the world of the school board, you can have members sitting around those tables that come from different places, that they don't all come from education. Sometimes it's with the removal of that much detail of content and expertise that some of the most simple suggestions can come that allows someone that does have that to go, you know, actually vibrates onto something in a way that, and you compound and compound, so something they start small. But when someone adds their thought and you just pyramid something into a good decision. But you've gotta make decisions, and the, and the work that needs to happen away from meetings and away from also has to get done. It's difficult. You don't have a lot of time, and I know resources are tight. But you have to have folks that are willing to dig in and ask difficult questions, try to think of all stakeholders, try to get to the root of what issues really are. So you can put time and money towards the best low, you know, low-risk, high-reward type of outcome that you possibly can. Don't be afraid to try something, but you've got to, you have to have ideas, you have to try to get to the problem, and have to try to move forward. Timelines are important. You can't, you can't just invent a timeline of making decisions.
Uh. He wants to, um, give me just a chance to give a few seconds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you've gotta remember that this is just an appointment that we're making. Uh, the actual vote will come in June, where you'll have to, uh, get papers signed. Uh, you two already did this, but, um, so if you don't get picked tonight, uh, we'll, you'll, uh, not just get discouraged and will, uh, come and take papers out and vote, uh, get uh, run for a position, Jim. Um, if you would like to say a few words in closing, uh, John?
Well, yeah, I'd like to thank everybody here for the opportunity to, to be here and to do this. Uh, it's, you would, I think it's an important position, one that, you know, shouldn't be entered into lightly. And I would certainly approach this with the seriousness that it, uh, that it, you know, entails. Uh, and again, just to backtrack for a second, I mean, when I taught in the classroom, my, my teaching style was collaboration. You know, we, we are all here together on a journey to learn electronics. Let's see where it takes us. You know, the guide, but, you know, the kids were as much part of the process as, as everything else. Um, so again, again, I'd just like to thank everybody again for this opportunity and, uh, program success or not, I really appreciate the chance to be here.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, bye.
Uh, just one quick question. What are your selection criteria?
Yeah.
What are the criteria you're using to evaluate all these wonderful people? Do you have any criteria?
Yeah. Yep, we do.
Can we just hear them?
Uh, your thoughts about budgeting, working well with other members of the board and staff in town, uh, focus on the well-being of all students.
What criteria?
Yeah, they're, they're high level. I mean, we're.
The answers to the questions that we're.
So you also just. Oh, maybe you guys are only reading, but I'd like to hear some criteria.
Okay, then we don't have criteria.
Okay, that's my point. So how are you gonna vote?
We're listening to what.
How are you gonna vote if you don't have criteria for these wonderful people?
Well, I don't think we can have criteria amongst the three of us, because we aren't able to have conversation other than here.
Okay, that's understandable, but I, I think in fairness, candidates here, I mean, do you agree? I should have some criteria for judging you guys?
There's usually nature.
Seriously? And be transparent about it.
Well, we're, yeah, we're doing this in our open meeting. We're gonna appoint based on what.
What criteria?
On, based on the answers that we got tonight.
I wouldn't call them criteria, mind.
This is an appointment. This is not an election.
Qualifications, that's fine. I understand that. Criteria is.
Any closing statements, Jim?
Um, yeah, just thank you. I mean, I think I've been really impressed with honestly everybody here and, you know. So I think you have your work cut out for you. Um, but I think, you know, it's, we are very fortunate to have, you know, five people here. I think it's awesome. Um, again, big shoes to fill, so I'll hope for the next year and.
Awesome.
Um, I agree. Um, five folks sitting here is more than I've understood has happened in the past. Um, and we're trying to fill a seat on the school board, even for a full term, let alone a nine-month term that's ahead of us. Um, I appreciate learning more about some folks sitting around here for sure. I appreciate everybody who's continued to come. Um, I'm very passionate about getting more involved in this work, and I've been involved sitting in a chair by myself on the citizen's side for months and months now. Um, and I'll continue to do that no matter which seat you put me in.
Mm-hmm.
Vanessa?
Yeah, I wanna thank you for, uh, being here and, uh, thank you to the candidates for coming out. It's nice to meet all of you and you put names to faces. Um, I just wanna say that I'm, I'm ready for this to be done. Um, I think that we need somebody on the board as quick as possible, and our school starts August thirtieth, so um, it's been a long process. Um, and I think it's just something needs to happen, and it needs to get the ball rolling, and, um, we're just ready for it.
Thank you. Um, are you, you need a few minutes to think?
Okay, I'm, I'm skimming my notes, but if everyone else is ready, I'll skim faster.
What was my name? I'll write that. I think it's doing the writing group, but you need to be watching. That's very good. It's for kids. Yeah, yeah.
I took French for four years at the school.
So do you have?
I took French for four years.
Oh, exactly. Yes.
Yeah, you know, half, half set.
What, what other problem?
Well, they can't even find a French teacher at Marath.
They can't.
No. Sure, they'll be.
I thought they had. They have candidates.
They have French teacher in high school, and then.
They do have, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's probably not same at long, but a lot of it. I don't think there's something, it was twice. I know, I don't stop the other. They, they emphasize. To blame, because not only is that a problem. Yeah. My time, yeah. What are you guys doing?
I just, I can't wait now.
They're gonna tell us who the winner is.
My road, that's your.
So. Kyle, are you ready?
I believe so.
Go right ahead.
I'm, uh, in favor of, uh, going with Leslie.
Um, I, well, thank, I thank you all five of you for coming. What I wanna say first, I thought you all had great thoughtful answers and I think it's a good thing then, then, just as you're saying, Leslie, community is like involved and wanting to participate. It's a great thing. Um, uh, Jenny was my lead as I was looking at the criteria or not criteria as, um, as maybe defined.
Jenny? Jenny? Could we to uh, vote for Vanessa? However, I would like to switch to, uh, Leslie. I hope it will, uh, run.
Me too. Me too. Me too.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I do, I do wanna say thank you to everybody that's joined this, uh, um, candidate pool, and, uh, I think that you had great ideas and, uh, really look forward to your involvements, uh, going forward. I, I hope that you reach out and try to be part of the school board in your own way. Uh, I, I appreciate it.
They put plenty of seats out over there for people to come along and sit. They really do.
Well, they might listen to Barbara's.
If you get to talk.
And I usually get rid of some of the seats and get to smell.
I would put up the seats. I would say put up four. Four people really need to attend.
Okay.
One man.
Okay.
Okay. After Kathy left here, where is Kathy down?
Thank you. I'm gonna scoot. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Am I allowed to add anything or should I add it for next time? It's just about the, the baseball field, it's been trying to get a. Um maybe get some donations in and. We don't have to tonight, though.
Okay, we'll see. Is Matt done out there?
To the North Road Drainage. My road, as you know, down here is.
This won't have anything to do with your section, but it, it has to do with his, but your section should be done. From your, your road up is bad. Yeah, I, I agree.
To your information, my tenant works for D O T.
What's that?
My tenant, Jennifer, works for the D O T, and she told me that she was gonna tell her boss, who's been on holiday. Back today to fix this road. Because it's an A, D, something, something, class.
It's a state aid road, state aid road.
They're gonna fix it.
Matt. What, the D O T agreed, uh Dave Allen came over. And he agreed that um the pool that is there now is what they put. And they will go with that, continue with that. Uh they will clean that out uh every two years and uh that's done.
So that is unacceptable to me.
Okay, so you should contact Dave Allen.
I'm not contacting Dave, I'm gonna get internally involved and get the town involved with the internal. You guys are the ones who. Who suggested that pool went in there.
I don't know about that.
It's not true?
I don't think so.
I will tell you right now, that, that pool has not been there for very long.
That's not.
Shereen was there when you go on?
May I?
Yes.
So here's the history of that, and I'm sorry that I'm entertaining everybody to go back to come forward, but here's some history. I grew up in the house. The state, it was part of a ditching that comes down over Wells Hill, which is North Road, if people don't know that, it's Wells Hill, it's Wells Hill. Um and that was always part of a ditching and they, they did a plunge pool. And that's what it was, and it would fill up with water and it would sit.
I beg to differ, and the reason I beg is because it was filled in down there back in the seventies, the eighties.
Yes, and it'll, and it will fill in until the.
I'm not talking the seventies, I'm talking the whole lawn.
Okay.
Because of all, all the bushes, when I remember growing up.
Yes, the state decided to fill that in, but as far as talking about the ditching coming down, they put the plunge pool in. And that's what they did, it's part of the whole thing, and. As part of the, um when I was on the school, and at the end of my term. And working with a community partnership on the village drainage. Um it was proposed that the Brook was. Um one of the sections that needed to be done for the water quality. You know, the catch basins went in the village along the community center and area, and it was time to move up. So part of that was, or the, one of the biggest things was, there was a couple of things that kind of went along. And there was a proposal made to um put wetlands in. Um it would be so much width on Matt's side. And also across the road on um Gerhart, on Howser and Child's Park. Um that didn't go over well at all, um we. We met with Matt, um Heather and I, Matt met with um Dana, it's part of the fire department representation. Um up over the fire department, and that wasn't really, um. Nobody really liked it, so it went to how are we gonna preserve the erosion of the park area? So that's when it came to getting rid of the. Um doing a twofold thing. Something's gonna be done on the Brook. Apartment, and that is a town facility, that's a town building, so the town really needs to. That area, and um the second part was, at the same time of going to the state. And figuring how we would work with the state and get the funds to pay for that. Um we. I put in for a catch basin to be put at Matt's. To stop it from filling in and stop it from doing that, but actually make it like in the front of the community center. Um so lo and behold, pandemic comes, we, we actually worked on that up. We got the materials and add, we got corn construction, um full corn corn construction. To actually do the work, because you have to be licensed, anybody doesn't. And so um we did up that. When the pandemic came and we lost three years to the state not, not doing anything. And then all of a sudden they come back and they're ready to deliver the catch basin. And pipe it down through, and the original plan. Um was down, and then at the same time that they do. Riprap and the forming behind the fire station, they would put the um piping in. From um Matt's property or basically.
Matt's property.
Run off, actually run off of the North Road down. But. Right, and so I have to admit that we thought that going down. I thought that going down the side of the road and going in the ten foot into the piping into that. Was um. Because it was going to fix your uh wet property from the overflow. And it was also gonna get away from the plunge pool filling in with dirt. It was really the benefit for you that that went in all at the same time, so we made it kind of like all that one project.
So you think they should move forward without an easement?
I think that um the town actually agreed to pay corn construction. And, and everything to put that pipe in, and that was voted in years ago, and. It sat out there, and so the town already supported. A portion of your property getting water drainage. Honest to goodness and gracious, it is not needed for the water quality of any home lake. Because water can come down off of the North Road, come down, it can go. The state actually has it, it's all under their jurisdiction. And the water will go and it will filter all through your grass.
But that's not accepted.
It will work its way and it will clean and filter, so there's no pollution that's really going into Brook area.
My front lawn is a complete cesspool because of the water coming down the hill.
Right.
And not being cleaned out, for one, and the other thing is, is it's not needed. Or something because it goes across my front lawn and I'm unable to mow it this year.
Okay, and that is totally state, the state.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, if Alan told me.
Ditching and the water removal in that area.
Dave Allen told me that the town had one responsibility other than getting the material, and that was to get easements.
Right.
So you're telling me that this has been in the process now for pre-pandemic, right?
Yes, it was prior to that, yes.
Five, four years ago.
Yes.
You knew about this.
Yeah.
And you, you're telling me right now you didn't know that you needed easements for across all these property?
Um no, I, I'm telling you that at that time, we believed that. I believe that you agreed to putting an.
I totally agree with it.
To ten feet over at no charge to the town, because the town paid for the work to be done.
So I get to pay for it twice.
Monetary, the panel was paying, torns, put it in, cover it over, you would even, you would not know it was even in there. Grass grows over it and it's, it's all.
Once that pipe's in there, Shereen.
Yes.
Do I get to do anything I want with that property at that point?
Of course you do.
Really, I can dig down in there and put in a foundation if I want?
Well.
Of course I can, so think about this before you speak.
Well, okay.
How dare you go across my property without an easement?
That's right, so we're not, we didn't realize it was gonna upset you so badly, apparently, I'm.
Here's, all I've been doing with is the CPC wanting to take my front lawn. Uh to protect, because you wanted to come over and dig fifty feet of it the last time we were in.
It was a recommendation for wetland.
What, what was the recommendation, had it all drawn up?
And it didn't go anywhere.
Maybe it could have gone a little bit further, had you come and spoke to me before you had it drawn up.
Well, it was just a.
No, it was in, it was in depth directions of what was gonna happen.
It was, so we could, and when you said no, that was the end of it, Matt.
This is why I don't like government though, because you guys seem to think you can do whatever you wanna do when you wanna do it. Without easement.
I think at this point, it should be between the state and Matt. It's really not, it's a state aid road.
But you guys invested money into this already.
No, we haven't.
We didn't.
Really?
Where's the money? We haven't.
CPC has not done, invested any money into this project at all.
No.
You had designs done?
No.
Yeah, we.
Who had the designs done then, Bob?
We haven't.
The state did it.
Yeah, the state did, did it with.
You had all the material bought.
This is the state.
State.
You had all the material bought, who was paying for that?
The state did it.
That wasn't what I was informed.
The state paid for it, their ADR, D O T, estimate portion five thousand.
Yes, the state, the state worked in conjunction.
We didn't spend, spend anything.
In conjunction.
All I'm gonna tell you is that I'm gonna fill in my side. And when the water runs out towards the road where it's supposed to be, you guys can deal with it.
But it's not us, I mean, I, I can't speak, I mean, I'm just the select board, but select board can speak on their own. It, it's not us, that is a state.
I'm gonna tell you right now, Shereen, you were not telling the truth about that uh drainage at the Barnet driveway. Cause I'm gonna tell you right now, the water used to always drain down across their property, because your father and brother had it filled in.
The state, so, yes, yes, but there was a plunge pool.
No, there was not.
And, and when it, and it wouldn't, it would fill in, I know, it would, I know exactly what you mean, would fill in, would dirt as it came.
And I have no problem with putting in the underground drainage, I just wanna make sure I can get a septic system down on that front lawn. Why is it up, where else am I supposed to put it?
You shouldn't have heard it.
Well, like, what, uh, that's good.
Yeah, they shouldn't have heard it.
I mean, if you want to do that, that would be, um.
But I think I should get some compensation for the easement.
We don't need the, they don't need the easement anymore.
If they're gonna do nothing at all, they don't.
Right.
But if they're gonna put in the underground drainage, they do.
The state can do what they want.
They're not gonna do that.
Okay. It's all of your county that has no investment in this at all.
No, no, we're, we're, no, no, the town wouldn't have an investment in that portion of the project. But I do hope, I seriously hope that the town is going to continue on. With the other side of the Brook, which is a fire department side.
Right.
So, cause we really wanna make sure that that's.
Okay, what he, Dave Allen, as an engineer, I asked him if they would give us a load of rock, and he said. He didn't, he didn't think that that was the E P approved. So that gave me a red flag.
So what if it's both?
So the only reason you have to put those rocks on that, on that side of the um stream. Would be to protect what, the gas tank, L P tank?
It just gotta stop it, so that the, so that it doesn't get closer, because there's the stairs going down too, that's in.
It's got so many trees growing in there, it's a, it's a mess.
Actually, well, one side, one side of that is, knowing that the trees are there now, they're holding that tank up.
Yeah.
So.
It's, it's a mess.
It's a mess, okay.
And the road coming down.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a mess.
Like, yeah, the river Ganges down there.
Yeah, which the state better be, gonna do, do a little still, right?
Right.
Yeah, they'll come right down and they'll catch it, they'll all run. That's the state, right?
Okay, I hope that's done for us. And I'll hope Matt talk with the state, that's not a problem.
Right.
Why can't the state contact the E P? Are they contacting them?
No.
Why?
They think it should be us, because it's on, it's not on, this is not on state prop, uh state land, that's our land, the fire department's land.
Are we gonna contact the E P?
I don't think we should, I don't think we're gonna get into a battle with the E P on.
Well, not in a battle, just saying, are you gonna get some information from them?
Yeah, Bob, why wouldn't we reach out to the E P to get riprap in there?
Yeah.
Take a look at that side, I don't know how you're gonna put stone there. Well, you, I know there's. You could use a mini excavator, possibly. But then between the stairs and the propane tank, I don't know if you can get a mini excavator in there. So I don't know how much stone you can get in there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a number of different options here, like caged stone and.
Right.
Rather than just riprap.
Right, that would be better than riprap.
Well, we could always reach back up to D O T and see, you know, what they recommend for that area now for erosion control. And we'd have to be permitted for it too.
Oh, yeah.
So we might as well contact them because.
Yeah, and then still go for Dave Allen.
They like.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's just.
Okay. Not tail road, um I've asked Lee to look into doing some ditching up there. But hopefully help that guy that was very upset. Were you here?
Yes.
Okay. Um community center, um. Okay, we had to do it after um the fact permit for the generator. And the two heat pumps, um that should go, no problem. That's a, I've got okay's on both.
Yeah, I thought, maybe I'm out of, the planning board took a look at it at their last meeting, right, so all good now, yeah.
Uh the abandoned house trailer on the, like, on the, there's a pond road is, a letter has gone out. To that, the owners.
Can I answer a question on that, Bob?
Uh, yeah.
Why is the town getting involved in the abandoned trail, I mean, I'm just curious.
Uh for healthy reasons, someone could get in there and get hurt or whatever.
So it's abandoned house?
It's a trailer, but if you look at it, it's just these old uh. Roses, you know, the wild roses, just can barely see the trailer.
The van on his ass, you know?
No, about it. Okay, M M A did the insurance inspection and all of the links. We should be getting a uh, a report back from them, they look pretty good, so hopefully it'll come back nicely. The L P gas pricing, I haven't done anything with yet. Um, baseball fields?
Yes.
What would you like to talk about on baseball?
Well, I would, I would like to, um, since I'm the only person on the athletic, uh, I'd like to get more people on the athletic committee.
Should we do a little advertising?
That would be great, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Um, I, so I feel like we should try to find like some donations, um, whether it be from, um, in-town companies, trying to know how many in-town companies we have that have money to donate. Um, I know you would, I know we have money in our, um, budget. But I'm just saying for overall upkeep of the fields, um, cause they're town fields. Like I just, I just, I mean, I want something better for our fields and our, um, looking for the long run, cause our. Future stuff to just have, um, our fields are the upkeep on and this, um, pretty tougher as the years go on, so. And I feel like I'm the only one trying to keep them going, so, my husband and I, anyway.
Carry, to use that twenty thousand that's been carried, uh, would we need a special town meeting to use that?
No, you wouldn't, but it has to be proved prior for the use and. We do have, um, we do get income from the baseball sign up and soccer. So we have twenty-five thousand. However, we do have the electric, the lights, the field lights, and we do have regular maintenance things we have to do. And quarter block, right?
Yeah.
And quarter fine, so, um.
So soccer, that's, the money's still coming to you because I was under the impression that, um, Refill Rec, everybody was registering through Refill Rec. Are you getting your money from Refill Rec?
I haven't seen any this year, I mean, since July first.
Well, it started last year.
Yeah.
Where they did all registrations through Refill Rec.
I believe that so much, yeah.
I think, I think so, unless I'm mixing it up with years before.
So you got the money from Refill Rec, whoever signed the contract.
I think so, yeah. Okay, so yes, there is twenty-four thousand, but it's not all unencumbered.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
For bills, for bodies and.
Right.
Wrappings like that, okay. Okay, so it's there to be used. So if you have a plan of how to do that, then you need to get estimates to.
Yes, and I was just wondering how much actually what, so I could go out and you get some estimate.
Well, there. I'll see the number for how later. But that's what we can talk about, cause offline if you want, um, I actually was part of building the original fields.
Okay.
The twenty-five thousand that's in there is probably back from when my husband and I was, um, doing the Athletic Association and everything around it. And we can talk offline, I can give you a little bit of tips and what we did.
That'd be great.
A little bit of what, where, when and why.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yeah.
All right.
Um, Vanessa, do you want anything in particular in an advertisement for the next newsletter, or should we just say, looking for members?
Yeah.
Email Vanessa?
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um, panic buttons. Um, the two that are, maybe I shouldn't be doing this, I mean, the two that are out by the clerks that I'm not working.
Oh.
And treasurer is requesting one, additional one. I mean, might wanna have one here.
Mm-hmm.
What do you think?
Mm-hmm.
We, uh.
Who, um, who, the, the security company?
Yeah, where they get prices. Um, we did a water test at the beach and, uh, uh, let's see, the max is two hundred and thirty-five, we came in at ninety, uh, fifty-nine.
Great.
That's brilliant, so came out all right.
Nice.
Yeah, nice. I might do another one at the end of this, at the end of the season like that.
We testing for boost?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Not child urine. Not child urine.
Yes, that would be in there.
Yeah.
Um, the trailer for the, uh, speed thing, I'll talk about that. We're on the list.
Okay, great.
Uh, Paul, um.
So that, that means that Lee or somebody is.
You're gonna have to get trained.
Right.
Yeah. Um, we should be looking at cameras at the transport station.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they've lost some things. Well, I just found out that they actually found one of the things they lost. But, um, well, we should talk with Paul and Scott Harris about that.
Yeah. An estimate would be.
Okay, LD two thousand and three is the housing thing. Um, because we have zoning in town, we can ask for ten thousand dollars right upfront. And if we don't spend it all, we just send back what we haven't, I've spent. We have spent right now, um, there was twenty-five, twenty-four thousand, yeah, and so a hundred. We've got a, what's that, twenty, it was twenty-four, twenty-four hundred. We're going to, uh, we're gonna make the requisition out to the state for the ten thousand, since I can.
What else could be put in there? Uh, we have the coffins with landing ordnance, does that?
Yes, we're gonna try to get, uh, KV cog to, uh, review what we've done so far. So that means we're gonna be joining? No. Uh, they will be hired as a contractor.
Ah, okay. Is that a lower cost way to go rather than having a man to do it?
Um, it, I'm not sure.
It, it gives us more breadth of, of, of look on it.
Yeah, since I'll be doing a review of different towns, so.
Okay.
Hopefully that'll, but I haven't gotten estimates from them. I've asked for an estimate in KV.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the, the advertising thing that I talked about, um, we have an advertising policy for the, uh, newsletter. We should have something similar for the website. Not necessarily advertising products, but, um, what content gets put into the, uh, um, website. Uh, so we should probably take that up next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So we gotta add that to the, that policy.
Yeah, I did, just a quick update, I did dig back through and found. It really lasted policies, last time we were working on them.
Yep.
Um, so. I feel like I started a little spreadsheet so we could just track.
Yep.
Which ones as we go through and just check them off. We could just do a few at once, okay?
Yep. Um. Okay, um, we keep talking about these grants that we can set and look at. Um, one thing, you know, I've never written a grant. I don't know if you have, Kyle, have you written any grants?
Long time ago.
You know, we, we probably should be looking for someone that has written grants. Even if we have to pay them, um, you know, if we're looking for a million dollar grant. You know, we, we, we've gotta hire somebody to do that. Um, someone contacted me, um, said that they lived in town, um, and not living in town right now, but he does do, uh, grant writing.
I think I got that same.
You got to, you know, too. Um, if anybody knows of anybody that writes grants, um, and would like to do it.
There's, there's, uh, there's a couple down Desert Pond right within that area.
If so, on the desert.
Eric Murch.
The Murches?
Yeah, and Murches, and they're very good at what they do. And for those who are worried about politics, one's on one side and the wife is on the other. Yeah, and, and, you know, that's great.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're both, she's very bright, she's very active, and he's very bright and very active.
Which one writes the grants?
Uh, I believe both of them can, can take care of.
What you do.
I just have a question before we go off on the wrong direction. Do we? Any money in the budget to pay some other grant writer?
Well, um, hopefully, yeah, the grant hopefully will pay for that.
Right.
It'd be a contingent.
If you get a grant, you get paid. If you don't, you're not getting anything.
I think some grant writers set up that way and some.
Yeah, some will, some won't.
So I think we would have to ask that question.
Main resilience and a couple others, um, I've never met one that does it. See, I can assign them.
No, that's probably more of the case, yeah.
That's a town that has thought of, um, putting together a grant writing committee. See if you did any.
There was.
There was one. There was one that.
Yeah, that he's.
Peter now.
I'm not talking one person, I'm talking about.
No, there were, yeah.
And if you don't, yeah, yeah, that's one I'm interested in. So, wasn't it Tom and Jen Duvie? And, and, uh, Jen Jefferson, I guess, she's doing.
He's so busy though.
Well, yeah.
They're also busy, that's the problem. It's time to come down. Yeah. But that's a thought, anyway.
Thinking if they work collaborative, then maybe it would be such a large. Right, but that's a burden, I think, if you want.
And what was the other one? Jefferson and?
Jefferson and Jen Duvie, Jen Duvie I know is what we're doing right now with, she was on, I think, yeah.
Okay.
They could have some Murches and anybody else and that people actually give out names and, or maybe.
Okay. Good. Um, I think that's, yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was wondering if I could ask, um, where we landed in the overlay that got us to a nineteen mil?
Uh, we didn't ask for very much.
It should be first, second, um, option from the.
First.
First one?
Yeah. Very small amount. Um, we're in a fairly comfortable zone where we're not getting a lot of abatements.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not too worried about that. So we felt close. That's, oh, I'm glad you said that, um, talking to the assessor, um, we're riding rate about eighty-two, eighty-three percent on our, um, valuation, I think they call it.
It's kind of close.
Yes, so he's saying we might dip below the eighty percent next year.
What's he recommending?
A revale.
I thought that we had a quarterly.
We do.
That was supposed to work.
We do, but that only goes so long. The state requires you to do one every ten years. Now we've gone more than ten years.
Yeah.
The quarterly view keeps you above that eighty. In a, in a better position. It doesn't keep you like we are. It, we're, we're dropping, dropping, dropping. Um, it, it gave us quite a bit of leeway this year though. Um, but the way the, uh, lake frontage prices are going right now, that's throwing us. But, and that's what happened the last time, although we had a very bad review that time. Um.
There was a, what was it, a rebound?
Yeah.
But there are pricing of that, um, everybody's per year before budget season, cause something else is gonna happen, not.
Yeah.
That's a huge.
A revale, a revale will cost quite a bit, although if we go with, uh, deplacy, it would be much less because he already has the cards. Um, so something to think about, anyway.
I could, and, and get that in front of it.
Yeah.
Then I'd allow it.
Yeah. That's not a problem.
No.
Did he give an estimate or not?
No. Oh, got anything?
Um, just a quick update that, um, Grow Smart Maine got that grant, their community resilience grant that they.
Yeah.
Apply for, um, so I think their, last time I chatted with Harold, they were just getting all their, you know, paperwork finalized, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but then there'll be some next steps with, it was for Mount Vernon and Vianna to support the application for that grant.
And that was granted?
Yeah, not the full amount to, of the, the bigger grant, but the planning grant to move through the process.
Derek says he's interested.
Who's this?
Derek Murch.
Yeah, just.
It's his number.
Yeah, it's gonna cost you, Bob. Is that part of the, uh?
You wouldn't say that out loud.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wait until, wait until after.
Owl was there, huh?
The owl, right there.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm picking up the owl. This is a secret, Bob.
It blows up once he goes outside in the parking lot.
Okay?
He tosses it.
Yes, exactly, yeah. No problem. I have to give it to him now.
Don't say that loud.
Yeah, don't say it.
I'm not gonna.
Write it down on a piece of paper, let him write it down.
Bob's gonna have.
After we adjourn.
Yeah.
Are we ready to adjourn?
I think.
Yeah.
We make a motion that we adjourn at eight-thirty-two.
Second.
Vote. Freeze it.
All right, everyone on the internet. I know.